All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll call the workshop to order and that's Commissioner Hughes, she's praying for us.
Dear family, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to see such beautiful day, God. Lord, we ask that you be with any family that may be going through at this time, and we ask that you put your loving arms around them. Lord, as we get ready to go into the holidays, we ask that you look upon those that are less fortunate. Look upon the homeless, God. Touch them and keep them. Dear God, keep them safe. Lord, as we get ready to go into our meeting, we ask that you give us the mind to do your will, dear Father. Not pleasing to us, dear God, but pleasing to you. We ask you all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, is there any in the audience that'd like to come to the stand and talk with us for five minutes or less?
I would.
All right, please come and state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Deborah Hoffman, and my address is 1902 Yeoman Street, in the Phillipsburg community. So, I'm here on behalf of all of the residents of that community. And just here, I wanted to express our gratitude for what has been done already down in that area. Mr. Jason Jordan, thank you so much, and even our Commissioner, Mr. Donnie Hester, we thank him for what he has done for the community. However... However, there are some things that, you know, we are just concerned about, and what's going to be done, what's in the plans to be done. We'd like to know more about that. We know that this commission was awarded a $750,000 grant for the area. I'm just interested in knowing how that money was used, what's remaining of that money, and what does the commission stand to do, plan to do, you know, after that money is gone? How can we get that area, you know, under some kind of, some... Well, I'm a little nervous.
You're all right.
But we're just concerned that the area gets cleaned up and gets, you know, an area where we want to continue to live and stay.
Sure.
And I've been there thirty-five years, and, you know, things are getting worse. That area, the drainage is beginning to be a problem. I lived there, right behind the ditch. Sometimes it overflows and, you know, just causes a lot of problems. So, we're just interested in knowing, you know, how we can get more money and how can we get that area cleaned up and a better place to live for our families. So, I'm just hoping that we can get some, something resolved as soon as possible.
Ms. Deborah, you could not have picked a more perfect night to come with that request, but we won't be addressing that unless Mr. Carter wants to go ahead and address part of the panel.
Just briefly, I was gonna make sure everybody was aware of this. Outside of 5.2 figure on the agenda, you look down and it says CDBG project. That's the $750,000 that you were, you're talking about. We're gonna be discussing the $6.7 million that we're gonna be spending down there.
All right.
Of which that $750,000 is just a very small part of.
Okay.
So, I mean, you've heard some discussion about, or maybe you haven't, but the county has, has what we call reserve fund balance, has built up over the last couple of years. And this is one of the projects that we're spending some of that on. So, you know, what we originally thought was gonna be about a $2 million project is now a $6.7 million project. And if we, this board had their way about it, this is just the first phase of what we're gonna be doing. Not just in Phillipsburg, but all the way through into Unionville, all the way over to 41, really try to help with the drainage and clean things up down there. So, just so you know, that $750,000 you're talking about is really, is $6,719,579.22.
I'll take it. Thank you.
Ma'am, you can just stick up your check later.
Jason, Commissioner, I have to appreciate you telling the thank you, because then we don't get that a lot.
Very good.
I was just gonna ask you, could we, it's three, I don't know if she gonna leave or stay here or not, could we move that?
I think she'll probably stick around for $6.7 million.
I'll stay.
It won't take us long to get through the first one.
I got it.
All right, anyone else like to talk to us tonight? All right, Dr. Lester? You know the routine?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Julie Lester, 139 Willridge Circle, Tifton. And again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. If you remember called the November workshop, there was a proclamation about being good neighbors. And tonight, I would like to speak about something that I believe is essential to being a good neighbor and good governance: open and honest communication. So, I do want to thank the county. You say, guys, don't get thanked a lot. I'm thanking you right now for making an attempt to communicate with the public about the issues surrounding loss on both social media and on that website y'all have. But I do question the intent of this communication. Is it really to inform the public or to cast the city of Tifton in a negative light by making claims without providing supporting evidence? If it's the latter, then I'm gonna say that's not a very neighborly thing to do. And additionally, if my tax dollars are being used to fund this website or the social media campaign, I'm very concerned that my money's being used to spread information that may be misleading or misinterpreted. I have numerous concerns about information that's been put out to the public and allegations that have been made in one-on-one conversations with no evidence provided to support the claims. While I don't have time to ask questions about all the claims that have been made, I'm going to focus in on one. On the website, there's a claim that equalizing water and sewer rates between, quote, municipal and those residing outside, quote, end quote, are, quote, required by Georgia law. A survey of 484 utilities across Georgia in 2020 and 2021 found that forty percent of, quote, water rate structures charge outside rates. If you look at municipalities the size of Tifton across the state, it is not unusual for there to be a different price structure for inside and outside the city limits. As you know from the service delivery statute, quote, "Water or sewer fees charged to customers located outside the geographic boundaries of a service provider shall not be arbitrarily higher than the fees charged to customers receiving such services, which are located within the geographic boundaries of the service provider," end quote. This does not mean equal. The statute does go on to say that, quote, "The disputing governing authority may hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the rate differential," end quote. My question is, did county have that public hearing? If so, when did it happen? If not, why didn't it happen? When was a rate study conducted by a qualified engineer to challenge the rate structure, or has that not yet happened? If fairness is a concern, it seems like these steps would have been taken and that information would be shared with the public. If you want the public to know the truth, I'm just asking to please provide the information and documentation to support of all the claims and allegations that are being made. And I'm happy to share the survey if you want to see it, it'll pop in. Frankly, honestly, I know you guys are sick of this, you're sick of seeing me come, what, this is five months? But it's my responsibility, it's my obligation. I love the city of Tifton, and guess what? I love Tifton County. I care about my city, and I care about my county, and I care about every single person in the short end, even though I'm a black man. But I'm just tired of seeing these claims that lost is unfair, and that's not a reasonable argument for the issues that are going on between the city and county. I believe the legislation is flawed, and that's not the city's fault, that's not the county's fault either. So, if you legitimately think that lost isn't fair, then the county needs to work through bodies like ACCG to lobby the General Assembly during this next session to fix the law. There are people in Atlanta that want to change this law on both sides of the aisle, and I'm sure you know that. So, let's fix it. Residents should not continue to be held hostage by a situation that we cannot control, and we deserve to know the real truth, supported by facts and evidence, not vague claims in the window. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lester. Anyone else like to speak with us tonight? All right, seeing none, we have no appointments, we have no public hearings, so we're going to items to be discussed for regular session. First one being 5.1, the backup and recovery software hardware out.
Evening Commissioners.
Good evening.
In 2017, we upgraded our backup capabilities by going with Unitrans. It allowed us to do this and this backup, put our backup speeds as well as our capacity, as well as offer a way to replicate those things out to the cloud so if it's off-site on the way from Tifton County, should we have a disaster. That contract is running out in the next, in next month. And so, as part of the process of looking at renewing that contract, we also got to talk to vendors and also kind of evaluate our backup needs and systems and see where we are. In looking at what we needed and what we have now, and talking with other, talking with multiple vendors, we talked with four of them, we decided that we needed something better than what we have. Mainly to ensure that if we were hit with a cyber attack or, you know, something like that, that we would have the ability to not just recover files, but recover entire systems in a matter of minutes instead of what could be hours or days. We looked at several options, several vendors. We chose the one that is offered to us by Bank Guard. We already have a working relationship with them. They monitor our security, cybersecurity services, monitor our firewall. They also offer a disaster recovery plan. The one thing that kind of puts them above everything is they are going to, we will purchase an appliance of theirs that actually expand our capacity for backups. We actually will replicate to two off-site locations, one on the East Coast, one on the West Coast. They will actually provide a 24-hour monitoring of these backup jobs. If something fails, they'll look at it, find out what's wrong, if there's something that needs to be remediated by us, they'll contact us, we'll take care of it. They actually will test the backups every day. And the way we're changing the way we back up, now we're not, not just backing up a bunch of files, we're actually backing up whole servers. So, if one server goes down and we need to recover it, we can actually start it up on their backup apparatus. So, we can actually recover a server in about five minutes. They are, the total price for this for year one is $33,286. That covers the price of the appliance that we will purchase from them, as well as all the monitoring that they provide, the certain, you know, all those types of services. It also includes them coming and developing, working with us to develop a backup recovery plan and disaster recovery plan using their backup system. It also will, you know, any type of hardware problems they have, they'll take care of. And so, we, we decided that that was the best value. Year two and year three will just be those services, the space on the cloud retention, and all those other services, the 24-hour service and monitoring. That is $25,176 a year.
So, you had anticipated this and had some budget to love to cover this?
This has, yes, sir. We put this in the budget. I think we might actually budget a little bit more than what we're out to pay them for year one. And then, of course, subsequent years for the budget.
Any questions? Consent, consent agenda?
Yep.
Thank you. Right, obligation of ARPA funds, Mr. Carter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have 5.2. Currently, there are $144,732 worth of unobligated American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Staff requesting this amount be obligated towards the Phillipsburg Unionville CDBG drainage project. Also, the board had previously obligated $200,000 for a hydrology study for the Phillipsburg Unionville area. This study being completed, the cost was only $31,513.75. Staff requesting the difference between the amount obligated, $200,000, and actual cost of $31,513 be obligated for the hydrology study and obligated toward the Phillipsburg Unionville CDBG project. So, you'll see that that's moving $313,218.25 to that 6.7. Yeah, $6.7 million project, so.
You're a long way off.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions?
That money gonna be added to?
It's gonna be added to the pot that's gonna pay for that something. It's got, it's got SPOS money in it, it's got CDBG money in it, it's got ARPA money in it, and it's got reserve money in it. Is that correct?
Using the reserve out here, it's got SPOS 6 roads and rivers and SPOS 6 public facility.
Okay, so in this particular...
In this phase, we're gonna be using the reserve.
We got it covered, and we got discussions about it. And a large chunk of it came from the American Rescue Plan Act, which is where we, if you look at the monies we spent in the American Rescue Plan Act, the largest portions were recreation and the drainage project. And as I told in this, is it Hoffman?
Hoffman.
Hoffman. I'm getting where I can't hear, Ms. Hoffman, I apologize. We've been making fun of Buck for years for not... Now it's coming back around on him. But this is just the first phase, so we're gonna be looking at additional phases and... So, to answer your question, yes.
Any other questions? Consent agenda?
Yes.
I'm excited. All right, 5.3, Tifton County CDBG project, West Phillipsburg Community. Mr. Jordan?
Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, that's been the topic tonight, and the, we received two bids for this project. And Hancock &amp; Sons Construction submitted the lowest bid for $6,719,579.22. This will be to replace the water and sewer lines on Yeoman's and Dorney Street to do stormwater piping and management and to repave or curb and gutter and pave the roads, along with stabilizing the ditch with concrete walls and concrete bottom.
Just so you know, that's four, we're talking about 4,000 linear feet of curb and gutter and roughly that much of roads, too, Commissioner, as well as PVC main, water main replacement of existing water services and 15 feet, 1,500 feet of 18-inch sanitary sewer replacement and 3,000 feet of 18-inch sanitary sewer main replacement. To be able to, this is a fairly hard job.
It's a two-box cover.
Yes, ma'am. So, what, the one thing that I'm gonna tell you, that once we get started, it ain't gonna be pretty. It gonna look worse, but it'll look better.
Oh, well, we ready.
Yes, ma'am. But, I mean, we really gonna start from the bottom up and make it, and make it better.
Wonderful.
You said that with curb and gutter.
Yes.
So, that mean...
There will be more ditches on the side of the road.
All the homeowners gonna have to give up?
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing it within the existing...
Doing it in the existing roadway.
Okay.
It's gonna be tight. All the water and sewer will be in the road, but yes, it will be curb and gutter.
Okay, that's on both sides of it?
Yes.
When will they start this, Jason?
Sir?
When will they start this?
A job this big right here, once y'all award it next week, and you're gonna have to wait for bonds and insurance to come back, and they've got a lot of materials to order. Like I say, this, this is not gonna be a fast project, and all we can pray for, and you're a farmer and you don't want this, is no rain.
We're looking at spring, Jason, early?
We'll probably start before early spring, but we probably will, 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 if we're lucky, be finished by this time next year.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
That ditch that runs right before we get to Ms. Hoffman, what would happen with that ditch? That's, that ditch.
It's gonna have concrete walls on it and a concrete bottom.
So, the ditch is still big?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's not actually, well, I don't wanna say the word creek, but that is a, that is a water shed.
Flow.
Flow.
So, to keep it from eroding in the properties and stuff, what we're doing is, we're basically hard, you know, we're hardening those shoulders and that bottom, so as your yard comes up to it, if it won't keep doing like it's doing, where it eats out and that kind of stuff, it'll be very easy to maintain, and it won't be growing up in the middle of it. So, you know, is it, you know, other than trying to put a great big bridge or something in there, this is really the best...
Now, this, and I want, this to be on record, this will not prevent flooding in a major, major downpour. Due to the fact there is a box cover that all this water goes through up under I-75, and we're not in control of that box cover, and it is not size appropriate.
But first, what we...
No, I didn't hear you on that.
Now, are we gonna, I know once we get started, that, that, that bridge, I mean, when we cut that bridge...
Oh, yeah, that'll be a box cover. That'll never be a pipe again. It'll be a concrete box up underneath there for the water to go through. Open-ended box.
So, do we, are we gonna close in, close them, close that road down?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. There's gonna be a lot of closing to local traffic on them.
Okay.
We'll keep the class of people that live there.
Do I understand, it's gonna be like we did before from that side, this way, and that way, go back that way?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk with the contractor, and hopefully, we can get creative on how to get everybody in and out. But like, like Mr. Carter said, once this project starts, this is basically tearing up everything that's there and rebuilding.
That's what we know.
Mr., you said you didn't want a band-aid to put on, Mr. Carter?
We're not putting a band-aid.
No, we're not.
So, there's not a band-aid.
That's what they call a Mercedes.
Once we get there, and I just throw my hand up in the air, and call it like I just don't care.
That's right.
Now, no price has gone up drastically since we first started talking about this project, but have we added to the project? Is that what caused it to go to...
One of the things we had, we did add water and sewer to it.
We covered that, that was covered up plus, and we knew it was gonna cost about a million dollars, but just like everything else in our, where we live in today, prices have gone up, so it's, it's considerably more than what...
It's basically double the what we thought it was gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
It's outrageous. Okay, any other questions? Consent agenda?
Yes.
Misses, I'd like to be excused, I got a basketball game to go see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Few more questions.
Keep writing.
Do you know anything about basketball?
No, but I can work the concession stand. See y'all, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Out of 5.4, fire training and sand facility use.
6.7.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
This evening, it's time to renew our facility use agreement. Coming us in the city of Tifton for use of the fire training grounds, which is located in 419 Old Omega Road. This is a budgeted item. We've been doing this for several years. It expires the end of this month, so it will be for calendar year of 23rd of January to December. And staff recommends renewing this. Ask any questions if you have any.
I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
Is facility in good shape?
Yes, sir. There's been some recent repairs done to the, to the actual burned building, some modifications. I think they've recently added a new pod on the back, and they put some new tiles in. That's probably the area that needs the most work there, so they have been working on doing some of that. The tower's in good shape.
Let's go. We have given enough free training and gate, just $6,000 here.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the question you don't answer, Chief. Just smile.
Any other questions? All right, consent agenda?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, item 5.5, Boca and CESL grant aggravation. Jody?
No, I don't think y'all. Honestly, I just need you to sign this so y'all can get $11,000 that slipped over from last year. So, that's really awful. This is true.
Okay.
There's $11,000 left from the coronavirus emergency supplemental grant that was for FY 2022. So, they just wanted your signature on this, the MOA that went with this, and all the social conditions. Now, that changes, it's everything that you, all that from last year. In the coming weeks, we're supposed to get FY 23, all that big package, so you'll see me again soon.
Any questions? Consent agenda?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, all right. Thank you. We'll always take brief questions. All right, a moment to board assessors. Mr. Beckman?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As y'all know, we work on about every other year rotation to appoint someone to the board of assessors, and Mr. Jeff Gibbs' appointment will be ending December 31st of 2022, so we need for y'all to reappoint him for another six-year term. As y'all appoint people to a lot of boards, you know, it gets harder and harder and harder to find people that are willing to take time out of their busy life to serve on any type of board, especially one with what we're responsible for in my office. So, I wrote you up a little paragraph or two there about Dr. Gibbs and his qualifications. He's been on the board already since 2011. He's served as chairman of the board most of all those years, and we'd just like to ask that y'all consider reappointing him for another six-year term.
All right, any questions?
Who currently serves on the board besides Dr. Gibbs?
Jeff Gibbs, Marion Hill, and Frankie Mathis.
Any questions? They just got something we'll decide tonight, you know, when it has to do with the, I'm next to a party, I have to be done in the regular meeting.
Right.
I just got one question. Other than you're talking about stream, if you find someone willing to take a class time, and I understand that. Everyone is always talking straight, but has any fillers been put out, any interest been shown by anybody?
We put out some interest a couple of years ago and didn't get very much response at all. It, it's very difficult to fill a position on board assessors.
Because you have to actually have to work. The assessors has to work.
You do. Sometimes you really do. They, they meet once a month, and there's a, there's a lot of underlying things that board of assessors does that a lot of people never realize how adept they are for them.
Hey, would you share with the training?
Yes, they have to maintain a certain amount of training to be able to vote and be a part of that board also. So, they have to attend some classes and keep their certifications up. Once they get certified, they can be able to, to make decisions and vote on different matters.
I think the initial school is, is it two weeks or three?
Two.
Two.
Then I believe, yeah, the initial training is two weeks, but once they get that, it's $40 of training every two years. They have to maintain that. If they don't, state sends me emails and lets me know that I have a board member that's not a compliant and can't vote.
So, how many members do you, it's three members? So, when you think you need to start looking because you have members or a member that's of age and with health issues? So, what happens then if you don't have?
Well, if you have two, you can still pass items with two people.
Hey, we're missing her point.
Yeah.
I'm old, and I'm never gonna have everybody on that board. And she's not saying that that's a bad thing, she's just saying if you had something, you know, can we start looking? You know, maybe putting somebody on there with, you know, with a little more of...
If you added someone, you're gonna have to add two, because if you add someone, you gotta have a vote, and you can't sell a vote with four, you'd have to have five member boards. Most counties have three member boards.
But you don't wanna get in a position...
Right.
Where you don't have a board period.
I think we still have one application that was put on file. We have one applicant on file that's been there for about two years, and I haven't spoken to that person since then. But, you know, if, if something happened to one of our board members and they came in and they couldn't serve anymore, we would run an ad just like an employee's position for people to apply, and then those applications would be brought for y'all, for y'all to appoint someone from that application file.
Do you remember who that one person was?
It's a local Realtor. I can't specifically remember her name, her name.
We'll find out.
And, I mean, if y'all wanted Marion to reach out to her to see if she was still interested, that's okay with me, by all means. Cockburn County currently hasn't had for one, because they have a member that's retiring. And I haven't spoken to them this week to see if they've had any interest yet in him serving.
Are there any other questions? All right, this will be for the record agenda then. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
All right, here's the way. 5.7, resolution number 2022-19, filing of application for regional transit services. Marion?
It's time for the Regional Commission to submit their 5311 application for public transit, and this resolution is part of that required, is required as part of that application.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All right, 5.8, ordinance number 2022-04, code enforcement board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna briefly open this up, and the county attorney, his folks have, if they've done, they already might work on this. But we've had discussions, a lot of discussions, how about that?
A lot of discussions.
About how we handle code cases and, and, you know, and trying to, to have our code enforcement officers allow them to have a little more teeth in what they do and, and an effort to clean up, especially areas of the community that needed. I mean, if you look today, I mean, it's a lot. I mean, it's not necessarily any one area now. I mean, you know, you know about the calls we had today, you know, we had county crews out there picking that up. One of the things that we were asked to do was to look at a, a... Uh, one of the things that, that we were asked to do was to look at a, a code board to, to handle these complaints and, uh, and ultimately, you know, give you citations and, um, rather than take it through municipal court. So Tony's office has, has put that. And I, I believe what you asked for us to do, uh, kind of wrapped up in a nice little package, use of Christmas, kind of euphemism. And, uh, so, Tony?
So, you know, our, our objective was to find a method that allows to deal with these code violations that would be created more expedited and potentially more streamlined and effective method of dealing with this. The law allows for a county to set up a code enforcement board, which is, uh, specifically considered envisioning achieving the objectives that we want to achieve. And so to do that, you have to do it by ordinance, and so there would be a vote, and you have a document to send your materials to chief of review when you clean out the next week. The, I think, I'm gonna go over some of the primary issue or primary things about the, the, uh, the ordinance, you know, just to give you the overview. But at the heart of it, what it does is create a board of three people that has the authority to find up to a thousand dollars a day uh, for certain, uh, violations and to, to try to get some better compliance with, uh, our, our, you know, code requirements than we've been getting. Uh, so it has substantial teeth in the sense that it does provide for fines that are substantial. It also has, uh, the ability to lean property. When those fines and certain requirements that are set by the board are not met or paid. Now, those liens cannot occur in every case, they can only occur in cases where public health, safety, or welfare has an issue. So if we have a, 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 an area that has, you know, debris on it that may not rise to the level of health or safety issue, you would not be able to leave the property, we find that. But if you had, uh, a dilapidated property where homeless people were in it and other things that could be a potential health or safety issues, then that would give us the ability to set those fines or not as for the board. Uh, that you would be creating to set those fines, and if those fines weren't paid by the owner, then you would be able to set, put a lien on that property. There's a mechanism then for that lien to come back out of, from that board, once there's an order, to this board, for this board to initiate a levy process in the same way, the same way that you would for example taxes, okay? So, uh, that's the kind of the very broad structure of the, uh, of the, of the ordinance. So, you know, kind of some of the details I think mattered, uh, you know, it provides for the appointment of a three-person board. Uh, they'll have staggered terms, provided for in the materials. But, uh, that's a board that this board is choosing. And this board then can make some determinations once you get your ordinance passed as to the, who you might want on there and how, uh, you know, they, uh, if they're, this is a basically judicial type position, they're making their fines a fact and they're issuing fines. And so, uh, you know, this board needs to consider, you know, what type folks would be on that board that feel comfortable could, uh, address the problems that we have. Uh, once you get your board selected, they, then it can provide that they, the board itself choose its president, uh, or it's, it's, uh, chairman, vice chairman, secretary, uh, all hearings open to the public, just like any other matter. So if they have a hearing that's been, you know, brought before them, then, uh, it would be, the case would be presented by a code enforcement officer. It also requires a solicitor to be involved, and we expect that there's no, because instead I have to bring the case forward here or magistrate court, and if we bring that case forward here, uh, with code enforcement, the solicitor being involved, you will never have the final rulings with the sort of fines and or depending on the nature of the problem, potential liens. There's a penalty process, so you have due process out of here to the superior court. If, if parties looking for a penalty, uh, uh, there's been an error that warrants an appeal. And, uh, the, the provision in state law, one thing that we still have to, for our subpoenas and to bring, compel people to come to hearings and witnesses, otherwise we still have to have issues subpoenaed by our magistrate court. And, uh, that should be the problem, I think there's one issue from there. We'd like people to bring evidence over themselves, come to be prepared with that file, you know, present evidence. That process provides the basis for how the hearings will be conducted. There's a basic procedure set forth in there. Kind of outlines how, how cases would be, uh, ordered, you know, conducted and, and, so. That's, uh, that's the ordinance before you, the, uh, that covers the primary details of that. And, um, what we've gotta be prepared to do, the process first would be to, you know, is to get, you know, if I read it between now and the next week, if you have questions, please call us. Let us know, but we'll look for, uh, what's just enacted, then we'll get the process like any other process, looking for, uh, folks to, to be appointed to that board.
And we talked about, we're gonna have to talk about a date, you know, uh, somewhere in, as, once it gets set up to, to begin to actually become a functioning board, I mean, so, but it is a process, uh, Commissioner, but this is the, the start of that.
I appreciate it.
So if we are, so, Mr. Chairman, this will be something the staff will put on the regular agenda, so before we have time to do it, we can also have questions in the next week as well.
Yeah, if there's something, if, if, if there's something, the question or something we think, well, can we do this? Or what about that, and maybe we may have to look at it, but, you know, we're this close, let's make sure we're satisfied with how the ordinance is reasoned and is provided for with community and then before adoption, so every time. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? All right, we have more time to read for Monday night, we might ask more questions. All right, we'll put that on regular agenda. Item five point nine, the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty, surplus of vehicles. Mary?
The district attorney's office has turned in a two thousand thirteen Dodge Charger that they got from the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department fitted out of service because of the high mileage. Um, the district attorney's office has purchased another vehicle and, um, put this one out of service. So we're asking that it be surplused and so, so we'll have use.
Any questions? Senator Jim? Okay. Item five point ten, adoption of county seal. That's Monday, goodbye. Amen.
Are you tired of it?
Are you gonna tell them the truth about this or what?
No.
My thing should never be told.
We got a picture there of it on the computer, I wish everybody could see it.
Go ahead and tell them here. Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, I'm gonna tell them.
Really and truly, this, the night that y'all approved, um, for us to even go down this road and start this process, Mr. Raul over there was doodling in his notebook and he brought it to me after the meeting, and it was this one?
Identical on this.
Are you serious? You did good.
But, uh, theirs is cleaner and, you know, professional, but, you know, it, but.
It looks, it looks stronger.
So we still had a paperwork?
Yeah. That's what I said, if I could just draw this, I could do that.
And the, and the chairman wrote our tagline, so.
Yeah, so.
It's the Tony and Tony show.
Y'all may refer this to the T squared logo.
We're gonna start a T and T market.
There you go.
But anyway, as you, as you do see there, um, what we tried to capture was the diverse economic makeup of our counties. So that's why we have the cog wheels and the one-site indicating industry. The roads really have a dual purpose to, to me, you know, we have a lot of major roads intersect here in Tiff County and that, but also it represents the distribution, we have huge distribution, uh, you know, companies here and, and of course agriculture with the brown field. And then we've got the nineteen oh five when Tiff County was founded in, in the leaf there. So, uh, it's been a lot of, a blessed way to get in here, that's for sure.
Well, we thank you, you know.
Yes.
She worked hard, she worked hard.
There's a, there's an example of a business part of what it can look like. I personally don't like it, but this is just what they gave you last minute to put in your books to see what something could look like. But, um, we're gonna keep working on that part of it.
Just give it to Tony.
Any questions, comments?
I like it.
It's good, it's much fresher than what we have now, that's for sure.
Yeah. The modern, that's right.
Yeah, modern, yeah. All right, can Senator Jim on this one?
Yes, sir.
All right, item five point eleven, agreement with the debate team for community champion initiative. If y'all remember, we tabled it there for November. And, uh, I've talked some, I have talked with the, uh, school system, Tiff County High School system. I've not talked with anyone from AVAC, Central, or Regional, or UGA, but they do have people that, um, works for the students and help them find jobs. It's assigned to one of their managers or whatever their title is, and then under him has two people that's boots on the ground with the work-based learning program and doing a super job. I don't know that there is anyone at the higher education, but if they're not, there should be, it could be, and so, but then, you know, to do that. But parts of this initiative, I feel like absolutely fit under the proper role of government, but then there was portions of it that I was not comfortable with it, using taxpayers' money to, to, for certain parts that the initiative was charged with doing. And so, um, it, it would be my recommendation that, that we do whatever we have to do to kill this permanent, set this table to the next month, so, but I'm open for questions and comments and suggestions on that.
Well, I remember when Mr., when I came back and Mr. Carter was here. And he brought to our attention the number of businesses, I guess I'll say, that we were giving money to. And not that that was a bad thing, but it just kept growing and growing. And so when Mr. Carter brought this to my attention, to, brought this to our attention, I, I'm, I'm thinking that this may open a Pandora's box for us.
Well, I disagree with that, I understand that opinion, I disagree with that totally, cause I don't see it as related to a nonprofit organization like Bed Crawl's and Salvation, like, we're getting something in return for our money here.
I understand that.
And part of that would directly benefit taxpayers if you, uh, can keep your, uh, people here and they buy property and pay taxes. And if we, we fill some of our own open positions that we have here in Tiff County Government, and we could get a lot of good out of it. There were just parts of it I didn't feel comfortable giving money to help maybe employees here, employers here fill their positions. That's not really our role, that's helping them fill their positions.
That right there, not our role.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anything else? All right, so how do we need to?
Just correct and not put it on the agenda.
Okay, put it on the regular agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, are we putting it on the regular?
We just removed, we just removed.
We're removing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just remove it.
All right, just remove it. All right, item five point twelve, appointment of county clerk.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Carter?
Sure you don't want me to take that one too?
I got nothing to say about that. No.
A wise thing, too.
You, it's, this, this is the yearly thing, and, uh, it, it, you know, I'm doing the introduction of it, but it's, it's absolutely something this board does. And that's not just to appoint a clerk, but the county attorney, uh, asking for, my opinion, I think we've got two fine individuals serving in both capacities, um, Marion's a lot more pleasant, uh, than Tony. They're both fine individuals, uh, so. From that perspective, you know, from my perspective, uh, we think we got, we got two diamonds.
All right, so we'll put five point twelve on the regular agenda and then you didn't say your piece about Tony's, so we'll put five point thirteen on the regular.
Well, he's just a lot of huggers that you're gonna see when he's off. Another person, he knows him.
All right, any other items for discussion that anyone has? You got five fourteen?
Keep Tiff here.
Keep Tiff here.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm, okay, I was. All right, five point fourteen, the appointment to keep Tiff and Bureau for. Mary?
Uh, the term for Ms. Karen Schultz ends December thirty-first, and she has agreed to serve another term, and I don't have any other applications. And we have, we, even with that appointment, we still have one vacancy on that board that we need to fill.
Ms. Ms. Schultz has been fairly active on that.
She has, she has, she really has.
That's a good board member.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll put that on regular agenda. Now, any items for discussion? Okay, are we having things?
Carter? If I just could, and I'm, I'm not still on board, but we do have a, a city council member, uh, Councilman Cromer is in the audience, so, thank you. Uh, I don't know if we have a city council member.
Very long time.
Been a long time, uh, so, thank you. And, uh, the chairman, we need an executive session.
For?
For legal, and I would say brief, but that, I, I won't, that's gonna be true, so, uh, we need an executive session.
It's kinda saying what the Patrick's ain't gonna hold as long too.
I'm not, I'm not gonna start up by telling something that ain't true, we thought it was not be here to do.
All right, let me see, you have anything?
No, I don't. Um, mental health. I know we do not personally do anything as far as funding with mental health, but I think we need to start discussing mental health, um, because it is in our community, it's in our jails. And I don't know how we need to go by doing this. But we need, I believe, and I haven't spoken with either of my ju- judges, I believe we need a mental health court. Court, and I know that will be part of funding. But it is getting really sad, not only here in Tiff, but all over the state. And as I go to different states traveling with ACCG, I'm hearing more about how they are doing some things. And I would like to see if maybe we can start tapping into some of the things that other counties our size are doing. They have resources out there, but we just need to be able to tap into it. Next thing, it is that time of year again for math and math.
Yeah, about that, Georgia plays the A's club that night.
I know. But I need you.
That's major competition.
But I need you, Mr. Chairman, here at seven fifteen to get the weather.
Okay.
Then you can leave.
Seven fifteen, I can be there, I can do that.
Um, Commissioner, you're gonna miss Commissioner Hester.
You can be watching.
No, Commissioner Hester's over here. I have, I have publicized him everywhere.
Might get a projection.
And we, we will have one out, we have, we'll have one out there.
Schedule, schedule him for halftime, I'm not gonna have him.
And so, um, Commissioner Hester will be performing, and our very own Casey King, I think, will be here as well. We have Move Doctor, Move Doctors Band will be there also, Music Solution. We have a, a wide variety of people, and I know the game's gonna be on, um, but I still want y'all to come.
Food vendors.
Food vendors will be there as well, you, you, you came before, yeah, yeah.
You gonna have a big screen TV down here?
We will have, we will, we will, we will do it, we will do it, because I know you guys will be with us. So I just want to invite everybody to come.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Tony?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Ripley? Mr. Webb?
Actually, I do, um, some of you have probably seen some of the pictures that I, I posted around. So I get a call this morning from one of my constituents, wanting to know if I'd been to Mitchell Street Road, said it is the worst that he ever seen it. And so I actually rode over there this morning, and he was correct, that I have never seen Mitchell Street Road look like it did this morning. Now, I, I wanna give thanks to Jason Jordan, because I know when it looks like that, they got it picked up today. But I spent a good portion of my morning on the side of the road with Jason Jordan, watching trash trucks go by. Every one of them had a tarp, every, even private individuals come by, they had a tarp. And I would venture to say that ninety-five percent of the trash that send these pictures is coming from tarped commercial trucks, Ryland and Golden Environmental. In fact, me and Jason were sitting there this morning, um, truck come by, I won't say it was. And back, me and Jason were sitting there this morning, truck come by, I won't say it was a Golden truck, had the tarp up, went by, this trash come out. So what I want to do is, is there any way that we could, and, and I'll be glad to meet with them, but get me in a room with someone from Ryland and some, and in a room with someone from Golden where we can maybe get some buy-in from them to maybe improve their processes to, anything that we can do to.
I'm sure they're using roll-off covers, I mean, our tarp covers that come on those trucks, but you know, just like anything else, tarp's wear out, you know, get holes in them and those kind of things. So I, I can set up for sure with Golden and I feel like Ryland would be receptive, I mean, to, so I'll put that in place. We, Mike, we've had some work on that, I know Jason is gone, but just as a matter of fact, he was out there picking up trash yesterday.
Yes.
And so it, it's, it's a, you know, that's the worst road, routinely the worst road because it's on the way to landfill. But we have the same issues on carpenter road and those kind of things, you know, there's other roads that run into that road.